I'd like to call this meeting of the board of Sloughing under order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got a couple of appointments. This evening, the first is by the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, project 41901, an I-93 detour. The floor is yours.
Hi, I'm Jeffy Haza from the Department of Transportation. I'm here to present project 41...project 41901. It's a bridge preservation project. The project is actually taking place in Bethlehem. It's over the bridge that carries US 302 and New Hampshire 116 over I-93. It's the exit 40 interchange. So just a brief overview of the project. Just going to be doing some preservation work on it. We're going to be pulling up the pavement, doing deck repairs, putting new pavement down, new paint down, and then we're also going to be doing repairs on the piers underneath. If you can click to the next one. So we're going to be doing the work through phase construction. So for the first phase, we'll be shifting, keeping traffic in the current alignment, but we'll be narrowing the travel way. And then the second and third phases, we'll be shifting all the traffic north, doing the work on the south, and then shifting traffic south, so we do all the work on the north. And then the final phase will just be putting down new paint and pavement. So the reason that we're bringing this project to Littleton to discuss is because during this construction phasing, we will be having to narrow the roads to 10 and a half foot wide, 10 and a half foot wide travel lanes, which will make it a little bit tough for pedestrians and bikes to get through here. We spoke with the town of Bethlehem, and we don't have any approach sidewalks or sidewalks over the bridge, but they did express wanting the option for their pedestrians accessing Littleton and Littleton accessing Bethlehem to have that alternate option going around town roads. So in order to connect Littleton to Bethlehem, we would have to use town roads through Littleton as well as Bethlehem. So we'll keep going to the next slide as shown this detour. So if we're starting up in Littleton, the pedestrian and bike detour would go Cottage Street, up to Grove, and then down around Highland, and then a little bit of Brook before entering into Bethlehem to loop around and back. So this bike and pedestrian detour would be in effect for about 21 weeks. Again, we're not expecting too high of pedestrian and bike usage through this. They would still have the option to go through construction if they wished to, so they wouldn't have to take this lengthy detour, but just presenting it as a safer option for those who wanted to take it. The second aspect is that in order to do pier repairs for this bridge with the tapering requirements, we're going to have to take the off-ramp to exit 40, which is where 93 South has access to US 302 at that exit 40. This work will be going on for about two weeks, so it will be going on during the other 21 weeks, some period throughout that. So during that, we would require a car detour, so we'll click to the next one. The detour that we're asking that we could use for that would be off at exit 41, and then coming up Cottage Street for that third of a mile span, and then back down US 302 to the bridge. So this detour has two low clearance bridges, so we will be routing all truck and oversized vehicle traffic past our construction here down to exit 38 to come back up I-93. So there wouldn't be those oversized vehicles coming through Cottage Street. So that's the gist of the detour options. So we'd love any comments or concerns with this? Questions? Yeah?
We'll take questions during the public comment session unless we have questions from the Sloughing Board at this time.
When do you want to, I want to get feedback from Chief Smith since he's here and stuff. When do you want to do that now?
We can do that now, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I'd just like to know his thoughts on it.
And just to clarify, this would be construction season of 2019.
Chief?
I think Bill Sargent reached out to these guys earlier and kind of answered the questions I had initially, the way we read their report, that the vehicle traffic would be routed down through Brook Road and in the Highland Avenue and Grove Street. We had some huge concerns with that, but they clarified the matter, and we're all set with the detour.
The only other question I have is that two-week period of redirecting of vehicle traffic, is that continuing two weeks or is it going to be sporadic throughout?
Continuous two weeks, yeah. Yeah, and if there were dates throughout that construction season, that would be key weekends maybe that you would want to avoid or key dates you would want to avoid, we definitely wasn't top concern.
Okay, if you don't mind hanging around further down the agenda, we have a public input session, and there may be questions that you can answer them.
Okay.
The next item under appointments is Ron Volk, who is going to make a presentation on the Lake Way plans. Ron?
Thanks for the opportunity. My condolences to anybody who's already heard this briefing. It's been peddled around a little bit. So this subject is not a new one. The condition of Lake Way Elementary School. It's been studied many times over the years, and pretty intensely since 2008. This year, well, actually, 2018, it became more urgent in the minds of the school board. There were two reports commissioned. One was an assessment report on the building, and the second one was a needs report for the elementary school. And both of those pointed to a significant number of deficiencies in existing children, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 80 deficiencies. Some of those were life safety code deficiencies. So the urgency to do something about this lingering situation gave some momentum. And so a committee was formed at the end of July, nine members from the community. And the goal was to present, to recommend a course of action to the school board that would take their mission functions and policy into consideration. So that's what we have been doing for the last several months. We've met quite a few times as a committee. We also did some independent study. And we basically came to the conclusion that the renovation of Lake Way was not be fiscally responsible. So our recommendation was to build a new school. We also felt that there were fundamental problems with this current's location on Union Street. So our second recommendation was to find a new location. So with that, I'll actually launch into the briefing itself.
Thanks.
Thank you. So these are just a few excerpts from various district and school board documentations. And one belief is that a positive learning environment requires excellent facilities, effective safety practices, and a healthy school climate. That all has to be done in a financially responsible way. And another goal is to offer the best possible physical environment for learning and teaching. So the current situation with the Lake Way Elementary School down on Union Street does not meet these mission, vision, and policy statements. I mentioned the renovation would be extremely costly and not resolve all of the problems. A new school at a different location would solve those, but we recognize that this would be a significant challenge for the average taxpayer, yet it is still the most fiscally responsible approach. Emphasis. Okay, so the current condition of that Lake Way, and I'll breeze through these so we can have a little time for discussion. There's not enough room to accommodate all of the uses of that building. The envelope is archaic, there's just a number of deficiencies. Air quality is bad, the building services are poor. The interior is in very bad shape despite the best efforts of the staff and the friends of Lake Way. Inadequate fire safety, security systems, very awkward use of space, L-shaped rooms, that sort of thing. And the core facilities, the gym, the cafeteria, the playground, are all undersized. So we looked at a number of options for what could be done about this. One was to try to do in one year all of the renovations and additions that would be required, that would include enlarging all those core spaces and fixing all of the medial areas. That would come to about $12 million, not including the cost of relocating the students for a year, which would be several million dollars, if we could find a place that would house them for a year. Second option was to do the renovations over a five- or six-year period, putting about a $1.5 million into it each year. There's some inefficiencies in doing it that way, plus it would require five or six positive votes in Grove to get it all accomplished. And again, there would be major disruptions to the classroom. Both of those options would not meet the Department of Education guideline, which is basically says, if you're thinking about renovating a building and it's going to cost 60% more, 60% of what a new building would cost, you don't renovate, you build. So we also looked at, what if we just rectify the life safety code violations? That would get us out of some liability issues, but it's still going to be in excess of a million dollars, and we still have fundamental problems with the size and location of the building. We could do business as usual, which is just kick it down the road for another year or two. Downside of that is there's a tremendous amount of waste into that building. It's very poorly energy efficient, to be as bad. There's no telling when a major catastrophe might happen. In the meantime, we're putting about $100,000 into it in repairs every year. And another downside of that is if something does happen in a catastrophic manner, there is no strategic reserve to respond to a crisis like that. Another option was to replace the building. That's going to be our recommendation, that is our recommendation. The other option is to do nothing. Doesn't sound like an option, but actually it is, just ignore it. But as I mentioned, there's a lot of wasted money year after year, and there are intangible benefits that we were missing out on by not building the school. There's lots of risks involved in doing that. And as I mentioned before, there's insufficient funds if something very terrible was happening. So our conclusion is that the situation requires either replacement or major renovations in order to meet all of those criteria we mentioned before. We recommend replacing the school because the existing building is approaching the end of its useful life. It's not a historic building of any type that would require consideration for avoiding that fiscal responsibility and keeping it going for some reason. It's extensively costly to renovate, and basically we still end up with an old building with shaky foundation, still located on a busy highway with insufficient parking that we pay for rent, we rent to use every year. And if we did an expansion, it would lose the playground. So again, the comparison, Lake Way was built in the 1950s, very conscious period of time. It's already been either remodeled or renovated eight times since 1950, adding, widening, higher or lower temporary additions to it. It's a real hodgepodge group Goldberg quality. So many major issues. Student and teacher disruption during renovation would be very extensive, and we would not be able to provide an economically safe and flexible environment that we've been building. So what we need is a 21st century facility. It's not the 1950s anymore. Many things have changed in the school system. Students are mainstream now. Individual educational programs, student ratio, class sizes have changed, we've got AD requirements, which is banned now for preschool education, not just daycare. We need realistic parking and bus routing, and there are energy efficient opportunities in new construction. As far as intangible benefits, one of the members of our committee did some research, looked at about 20 or 25 different studies on the impact of a new school. And they basically resolved, these are the common threads for those studies, higher scores, standardized tests, better safety for teachers and students, better health and self-esteem for the students and staff, better image for the community in attracting people to the area. And with, if we could combine this with some other activities going on in the recreation area, it could be a really community entity which would service all age groups, not just the students. Guess what? This is the same conclusion that was reached in 2008, and again in 2016. We don't feel bad about that. We feel we did our due diligence, and we just didn't accept everything that was done from the past. But so the question now is really, you know, if not now, when will we ever deal with the situation at Lake Way? Lots happened since 2008, a lot of town improvements, a lot of school improvements, but nothing has happened to Lake Way to fundamentally change the situation. So we started looking at sites. Again, this has been done before. Somebody pointed out that the first time Greenwood Acres was considered for a school was 1970. Not a new topic, not a new location, but we needed at least five continuous areas to meet state standards. Obviously, it had to be biblical. We needed at least two accesses. Needed proximity to the towns and to the high school, which is the emergency center, so need to be walkable. And we needed to take into consideration what the impact on the neighbors would be of the new school. So we wanted to make sure we had enough land to have buffers so that would accommodate that concern. Access to municipal utilities. And of the 20 sub-sites that have been studied over the years, Greenwood Acres is the best fit. So our recommendation is to acquire about 26 acres of the 116 acres at Greenwood. And this site could house the elementary school within a space for after-school activities by all age groups. New playground, brick center, walk-in cross-country skiing trails, ball fields, open spaces, the buffers I mentioned before. New housing close to the school would be an attractive option, and other as yet unforeseen future community needs. I won't draw on the recreation facility, because you guys know more about that than I do, but it would be great if we could combine those two projects in some way. So here's our strategy. We're going to bring forward a Warren article this year. And the purpose of the article would be to ask for appropriation of enough money to reflect what's going to be in the vault, part of about $900,000, to do two things. One, purchase the land, and secondly, conclude the civil engineering work that needs to be performed. That question about how we would fund that $900,000 is up for some debate. Various people have offered their opinions on whether to bond that or get that one-time appropriation. As we speak, the school board and me, and they will, I think, make that decision. One of the reasons we want to do this and do it this year is there's hope, maybe even reason to expect that some level of school building aid will return. There seems to be some momentum for that. And if that were to happen in 2019, we need to be shovel-ready in order to apply and to get retroactive funding for anything we had spent up to date. So we need the land and a plan, and that is the purpose of the Warren article. So it's very critical as the first step is to get that, the land purchased. If we do get the land and years later, we haven't been able to muster the support for a new school, we girls always sell the land. If we delay, I guess there's also the possibility we could lose that land, and it is our best fit. So we're looking at something short of our best fit, if we have to go to another property. Also concerned about economic forecast as far as interest rates. And so we want to get onto this as soon as possible. And again, inflation, cost of materials, that sort of thing. In 2008, when the Sears Wood was done at a new elementary school, the asking price at that time was about $14 million. Right now, we're getting about $20 million. So five or 10 years from now, you can project how far that might go. So we think it's time that there's some urgency involved in that. So are we going to bring a $20 million bond to the taxpayers in 2019? We don't know. We're going to ask for this $900,000. Hopefully, that will pass. And then we are going to wait to see what happens with the state aid. State aid comes back, we will launch into action, we will apply for that state aid, and we'll go from there. We already have secured the services of the architect, and we have sort of a pre-bond agreement with a construction management company, which is bonded to Stone, does a lot of experience in building schools. They built the modification to profile. They built the police station here in town. Very reputable company. They have a long history of working with the architectural firm. So there's good synergy already established in there. So if we were to bring a $20 million bond forward at 4% interest, it'd be about $1.5 million. We have to pay off every year for 20 years, and that would be $2, about $2.27 on the tax rate. If we get the matching state aid, that basically all those numbers get cut in half. And we already have two existing bonds on the school side. One of those expires in 2023, another 2027. So if we don't get the state aid, that's going to be the next milestone to look at when those bonds come off. That might be a window opportunity to bring forward a new bond. So what our plan of action is right now is developing educational programs. This briefing is part of that. We have other thoughts on how to get the word out to everybody about what the need is, what the recommendation is, and the criticality of the market vote. Parallel to that, we need to put a task force together to do whatever we can to lobby for the lifting of the board to adopt a state aid. We also need to start planning about repurposing the building on Union Street. It's not a bad location, just not for school. And any proceeds that were approved from repurposing that building could be pumped back into paying off the bond on the new school. And we also would like to, when the time is right, to approach corporations and local businesses and request some contributions toward that. We consider it as an investment in the future workforce of the building, and perhaps there would be some support for that. So in conclusion, we don't like to think of this as a school board problem. We like to think of it as a community opportunity. It's completely consistent with the Littleton master plan regarding economic development, transportation, land use. But this community will have to work together to get this done. Again, it's our children, in my case, grandchildren, maybe great-grandchildren. It's their future, and they are the workforce of the future. So we have to make the right decision. We need to do that now. So that concludes the presentation. So submit to your questions, and I'll stop.
Ron, thank you. We appreciate your presentation and you bringing it to us, to the viewers on the TV. And although the board does not have to make a decision on this, or requires a vote, rather than wait till public input, and while you're here and fresh and ready to roll, why don't we open-
Batter, batter.
Batter, batter. Why don't we open it up for, I'm going to say, 10 minutes of discussion? Does anybody have any questions for Ron?
Do you have any idea what the commercial value of the property would be once you see that near the old school? What worth it is?
The old school of the Union Street? You won't believe this, but we had a number from a couple of years ago, $5 million. Would I pay $5 million for it? Probably not. I don't have $5 million. But that was a number that was thrown out a few years ago.
I have a bunch of questions on that. First of all, if you were to get rid of the old school, what you would do with it from that area? Two, you own a bunch of land up behind Dr. Coinderson's, because the town actually made an association with the school. If you were to put that on the market, it might generate some money. I think it's probably 75 or 80 acres. It's got two means to be grass out of the thing on it from that part. The town doesn't have any use for it if they're going to go in a different direction on it.
I'm sorry, which property here?
This belongs to the town a little bit.
The Eaton property?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I just, I didn't catch.
Yeah, I mean, it's, why wouldn't you be looking at saying, getting together and saying, let's liquidate some of these things that we're going to do? I look at the elementary- I look at the elementary school out of this thing on it. It's, the reason why the elementary school was built where it was was because of the fact that they had a problem in Littleton. There was what's called capthop, and it was Littleton. And it was a case of, was such a fight between the young people that went across Pomer Brook that they elected to build that building right there to try to get the two towns, town, out of the towns together to stop the fighting, infighting, went on. There were two passes of property at one time. I think it was that one named Emory Hoof, and he had the first one by Pomer Brook. And then there was the other one that was Charlie, not Charlie Tony, but Salem Tony's out, which owned the land up at that. If that piece of property in turn, if you looked at it, and you started to look at it and analyze, never mind the school, what would you use it for? Well, the town's got a major problem down here with the senior citizens group. The senior citizens can get a lot of federal money. If you were to relocate them up there out of it and put that senior citizens center up there, you've got a kitchen, you've got a gymnasium that certainly would be still usable from the point of where it would be. It's a possibility you might move the library up there on it and put it in that kind of an operation. And then maybe you use the library as a town office. Some of these things need to be looked at prior to making some kind of a commitment involved on the basis of a financial budget. You need to be, you've got to be pulling the whole thing together, not just jumping into something from that part. I got another question on, you're, you're paying rent, I know that. Is it a long-term lease that you're going to have to pay on the lease profit?
For the parking?
Yeah. Is it year-to-year, or is it 20 years?
I, I don't know that it's a long-term.
Well, I mean, somebody needs to answer those questions, I would, because you're paying about $30,000 a year up between renting from the church over there and renting from the hoots across the way. And you need to know if you've got a long-term lease that you're going to be still stuck with on it from that part, and people need to know that, as far as that part.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer.
Yeah, but you need to, this all is partly what you need to know. If you want to go in and asking everybody what to do, then you need to have some kind of plans as to what the heck you do with it, from that point on. I have a hard time believing that you would just be able to liquidate and sell the old building up there on it for anybody, for housing or anything like that. You, you, you know, Littleton, believe it or not, we only had five new homes built in the town of Littleton last year. One commercial piece of property was built in the town of Littleton, and that's all there was. One, the commercial property was zoned for $1 million. The average of the other ones were approximately $200,000 to $250,000 apiece. You in turn redid the town for tax purposes in here. You increased the utilities, which was the power companies, the dam, stuff like that. You increased those approximately $12 million. When you get done with the tax rate, utilities ended up paying less money than what they had paid the year before. So what you have is approximately $90-some-odd thousand of additional property taxes in an evaluation. It's all going back to being paid for by the people that live in these homes. I mean, I've got friends of mine that have headed $1,000 increases in their property taxes. And if you're looking at what you're trying to do in this thing without having it all down to nitty-gritty and figuring it all out, so what you have is a net result, not just jumping into something and buying something, you need to have all those answers. I'm not saying I'm against the school or clients, but I want all those answers done ahead of time. So the fact that you know what you're dealing with, the community should know what they're going to do with on the property. They should be putting property up for sale on it as far as the Eaton property on it, and maybe making some other considerations of using that piece of property for the town. Whether you move the senior citizens center, those people don't have a place to pack down there. You've got all the, you've got a major problem with packing no matter what you do in the whole town, and I know you guys are working in that part. But consequently, they can't, people that are senior citizens that go down there can't find a place to pack, because you've got all the people from your thing over here on this side packing over there on that side, and they don't have any room for the senior citizens. But you need to take an overall, not just jumping into one particular part of the city on it. You've got to really have a good sense of it. And I don't think that you're, you're, you were just valid jumping into the redoing the whole master plan. It's not something that had it over here, but you're doing a whole new, and that all can be part of it, too.
That's a great segue. I'm going to ask, you know, what is the status of capital improvement plan, which we had at one point, where these things kind of got meshed together? Is there a place where the school and the parks and recreation and the town needs and future forecasts is hard blended together, and we have kind of a unified approach to it? And part of that, of course, is leveling out the cost of funding of all those various big, big projects.
We had a draft of the CIP. We presented to the planning board. I think that we need to update it. There was also a question, I think, in what would actually be included in the CIP. I think in the past, smaller items have been put in, and that's really not the true nature of them. It's more like you're talking about larger investments for the community. So it'll be an amended version for the planning board in the near future.
Are there any other comments on the Lakeway presentation?
A couple real quick is, the, what we're asking for this year, what the school is asking for this year on the 2019 warrant, is to be able to purchase the land and not complete the construction, but to get a engineering and a construction plan in place. This is required, because what we're hearing is there's a good chance the school aid's going to come back, at 55%. So if we're looking at 20 million, we could easily get more than $10 million of it covered if that school aid goes back. And they're saying it could come back this year, it could come back next year or the year after. But to get that school aid, you have to be shovel-ready. You have to own the land, and you have to have the engineering and the design already in place, ready to start digging, in order to even qualify or apply for state aid. That's where, it may be three, four years down the line before we actually start building the school. But if the state aid comes up next year, we want to be shovel-ready, ready to go. So that's kind of what we're looking at this year for the Warren article. I agree that, with you, Bruce, that in the future, we're putting a committee together to decide what to do in Lakeway. But we should involve the town in that. We should involve the town in that, because you've got any property up there. The recreation's looking at building some other parts throughout town. We should probably have the town and the school to get together to come up with a committee to say, what do we do with these lands that we're just sitting on? And what do we do with Lakeway? And what's the recreation department going to do? That would not be a bad idea, to put that together. Because like I said, if we don't get state aid in the next year, the next two years, we're going to sit back and wait until some of those bonds come off. And between now and 2023, there are 10 bonds and loans coming off between the town and school will be off the amortization, it will be gone. That's kind of what we're sitting back and waiting for.
Thank you, that's the 10 minutes.
If the school, I mean, I'm kind of getting like mixed vibes. On one hand, there's 80, over 80 things that need to be done, right? So some of those are immediate. On the other hand, what I'm hearing is, well, if we can't quite get to the building in two to three years, that would be okay, too. So I guess my concern is, or my question is, if the school is that bad right now, is there a chance that the state could come in and say, we're shutting it down? Is, is that-
Well, I'm agreeing, but-
Well, we, we kind of hashed out it at the committee meetings. The problem is, is, remember when a high school lost its accreditation because it wasn't ADA? Well, if we don't address some of these life codes, then there's a chance they could come back to the elementary school and say, you've lost your accreditation. You can't move kids from, from fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade, you've lost your accreditation, until you, you solve these problems. Right now, we're kind of, we're, we're sitting in and waiting to make sure that nothing is going to happen by the state, because they are life safety codes. The E gets coming down the stairs. To get the kids off the second floor and first, they're being, we're being told the stairs are too narrow. You can't get them all down at times if there's a catastrophe or an emergency. We've got 11-inch snowstorm coming, by the way, in the next few days. We haven't had a big snowstorm up there in a long time. What if we get two feet? And that roof, we know that roof is leaking, we know it's settling. If we get a major snowstorm at some point, what's going to happen? We don't-
We struggle a lot, like everybody else does.
But we know that we've got to start now getting ready for that elementary school as soon as possible. They are addressing some of the issues that have to be addressed, like the fire alarm system. It's an old fire alarm system, but they're keeping it running. We know we should have a newer one updated, but we are keeping it running, we're keeping the school open, okay? And that's the best they can do with the money they've got available at this point, is to keep things running, to keep things moving. But we've got 80 issues, and many of them are life safety codes that are wrong with that school. That's why we're, we're thinking now, let's start this process now, so that a few years from now, we do have a new school in place. If we have to wait another year, and we don't get that first move by the land, then we put everything off another year, and we just keep putting it off and putting it off.
Yeah, and it's, I understand that there are some fairly large projects on the town side that are on the horizon. So we've got to get these things queued up.
There, there are large projects on the town side, and actually, we've held off on them because of this. Again, thank you for the presentation.
Rudy's got a question.
The 10 minutes are up. Mr. Gelsi, please make it brief.
Very brief. What I want to ask the town is that $2.20, I'm always concerned about taxation. And this is not against the school, because in my opinion, education is safe, the two things that little town should worry about. Education is safe. But I want to ask you one thing. This $2.20, this is going to go on for 20 years? That's the first taxation that the citizen in the little town, that they're going to absorb it because of this project?
Probably 25.
Okay, just, Rudy, just let you know, that was, if we went for a bond this year, $20 million bond this year, $2.20 on the tax rate is what we look for. That's why we're going with this longer-term project, so we can get part of the government share, and then take a look and see where we've got the ability to get other funds to help us out in the school. So it's, we're not expecting anywhere near $2.20 on the tax rate when we get done, okay? There's going to be probably some kind of a bond. I don't know what it's going to cost us at this point, but that $2.20 was only a sample to give you if we did it this year.
In your opinion, you think the town should cut off all the projects that they have already?
I, I don't think-
It's like, you know, the parking property behind the bridges, the, you know, all the other projects that they have, which the taxpayer eventually, they're going to absorb something.
And I'm not sure if this is our discussion, we shouldn't be discussing this. But no, we can't stop progress. We can't stop it. We've got to look at the whole situation. For example, Park and Recreation's looking to do it quite a bit, but we'd like to tie them into the school, because if we've got 15, 17 acres up there, we're not using, maybe Park and Recreation can use. We can't stop the progress, but maybe we can have more discussions with the town on it.
Thank you.
Again, Ron, thank you. We're going to move on. Next order of business is the town manager's report.
Okay. So just a few updates, not asking for any action on any of these items. The wastewater treatment plant, just to report, the centrifuge has now been repaired. The system was in process to flush out polymer system and sludge pumps to ensure that there's no stone remaining in it. We were getting some from different cleanouts, and also the tank itself was chipping away and getting into the centrifuge, and I think that caused a lot of the issue. So also on December 26, we received a lab report indicating that we exceeded our EPA limit for our monthly copper and lead. But we determined that that's from a lot of sludge buildup, and we're going to be able to correct that. There's no issue with any specific manufacturer or anything. We're continuing to work on this town-school MOU. We presented as much information as we could to the school, we're trying to be very open, and we're waiting for a counterproposal from the school.
Can we back up?
Yeah.
You were talking about the EPA permit, daily, monthly copper. What's the, what's the, so what's the upshot of that? We get the report, they let us know?
So we report, what we do is we do the monthly testing, and then we actually submit that to them. So we notified them of our exceedance, and then-
Other than we have to figure it out and address it, is there any other, is there any fine, is there, what's the-
They, well, they would determine that. I think that in the past, there's been issues where we've had the same exceedance month after month in-
Then they might-
Over, you know, years that happened. And what can come down is they can force us to do something like a local limit study. I think that initially, when the sewer system was designed, we didn't require some things like, for example, manhole access to commercial or industrial facilities that are, are need to be monitored on an ongoing basis. We've changed that now, so that we do that. They can require what's called a local limit study, and it's very expensive, and it requires us to do everything from, you know, monitoring the local water supply to individually monitoring-
But this one issue, this one report isn't going to trigger that, or?
No, this one should be okay. We haven't, I haven't heard from them yet to see if, we have, we believe that this was because of the centrifuge going down, and we had a lot of sludge buildup. And now that that's being processed through, you know, typically what happens is, we have a holding tank, too, that where we take the septic haulers product. Typically, that's higher in certain densities of things like copper and iron and sludge and raw stuff. There, there was a slight, I don't want to get too much into this one, but there was an article in the paper about a restaurant closing, and I just want to just briefly address that, just to say that some of the information in there wasn't accurate. It did talk about a tax increase of 40%. I've looked at the parcel, that's not accurate. The parcel did go up in market value by about 20%. Their tax bill looks like it went up somewhere between four and five grand. So it looks like that, you know, the closure, blaming it on taxes, is probably not an accurate assumption, so, but working to, to address that.
But the, it was not a 40% increase?
It was not. No, you know, the tax increase was about, it was, I think, actually, I haven't-
Yeah, I have the number, I see the number.
Yeah, $4,143 is when it went up. And that was really based on the improvements done to the building and the fact that the market, the real estate market's doing better, and that building is in a desirable location and has other marketable features, so. And again, we use Department of Revenue Administration-required rules. I think the article also had an indication that, you know, we don't realize what we do to small businesses. I think that we try to be as open and friendly to business in a way that benefits the entire community, so. The other thing is, we're continuing to work on Opportunity Zone Fund and exploring, you know, different opportunities that might be available for that. We'll, we'll continue to do that and see if there's anything else happen. There, there's a couple of other legal case updates, but none of that. And we do have an urgent care, convenient MD hearing for a variance on January 23 at 6:00 PM. It appears to be a pretty popular topic. There's some, some who oppose it, and there's quite a few who are in favor of the project, but that'll be on the 23rd in, in this room at 6:00 PM. That's all I have for the manager's report today.
Okay. We have no old business. Under new business, we have three different items. The first of which is zoning board appointments. We have one position open. We have two people that have responded to our ad. We will deal with this under board action. The two people are Mr. Gelsi and Mr. Morgan. We also have to authorize the town treasurer to open an ESCO account. Andrew, would you walk us through that?
Yeah. So under our- Yeah, so under our contract for the Sub Five Sewer Project, the CW, Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, there's a requirement that we withhold ten percent of all invoices up to when we get to fifty percent complete of the, with the project. After that, if the engineer determines that there's no need, no concerns, then we stop collecting that and the monies have to sit there until substantial completion. So ultimately, it'll hold five percent of the total project costs for, for the J A McDonald portion of the contract, a portion of the project. So we need to put that into a.
And those monies come directly off what we would, the invoice that we would have paid them, instead it goes to the escrow?
That's correct, yep. And we already have had our first invoice, but we have a check ready to go right to the escrow.
The last thing we have to consider is to accept and expend an anonymous donation of legal funds for the Northern Pass case. Anything more to tell us on that other than what it says?
Yeah, nothing more. It's twenty-five thousand dollars that'll be split into four towns. Specifically towns that our attorney represents. It's going to be pro rata until it's gone. There's a condition that we're not to ask who's helping with the donation. And the town, we're still in charge of representation, but the bills are going to be paid out of that until the money's gone, so.
The key word there is anonymous.
That's correct, yep.
So we, next on the agenda is the board assessors. We have no business for the board of assessors today. And next is public comment. Is there any public comment on any of the agenda items? Mr. Hadlock.
The most recent one that you just discussed. We felt the electric thing.
The Northern Pass.
Northern Pass, though. I know the people voted in this town before they really knew what they were doing from that part. And then I don't think it was ever really done, I believe, by the electric company as far as that part. But on the other hand, I think that our water and light department has made a problem in trying to deal with the utilities that come through our town. Because if these people in turn can, if you're going to fight them tooth and day over here, they're not going to be working with you and they own an awful lot of other properties, even through the town of Littleton, on the thing on it. And as a result of it, we had at one time had talked about putting in a substation in the town of Littleton on the poor, private industrial farm. When you vote and try to deal with these people on a utility basis on it and you in turn fight them all from the point of what it is, you're not going to have the goodness of their heart to suddenly try to turn around and work with you. Accepting the money is one thing, but it's all depends. I don't think you have everybody in the town other than there was a vote taken here. Before, anything was really coming out as to what it was, what they were doing, what they knew what they were going to do or anything like that. And I think it's hard to make a decision until you really know what their ultimate goal was in here. Have we got that far? I don't know.
Are you recommending that we don't accept the donation?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
I'm not sure. I, I just feel the fact that the, it should be some questions before you actually accept something and dealing with it depending on what we're going to do. Our community, is it, are they not coming through often? Are they coming through often? What's it going to affect? And why would we in turn be accepting money to go on a, I mean, a legal battle that we really didn't need to, from the point of what it is?
Well, we've al, we've already registered it as a, as a participant and that we're against them. That's done.
That's how it was voted in the town.
That's done.
We were granted intervening stat.
Granted intervention status, that's the term.
So ultimately, do you know what they're proposing for the town of Littleton, other than a vote?
We have no idea.
Voting journeys all the way from Pittsburgh to down south on it.
We know the route. We know the route.
We know the route, yeah.
Does the route come anywhere in Littleton?
It's, it's within what's considered Littleton's view shed, and so that's why the courts had granted the intervenor status. They determined a certain number of parcels that were going to be basically facing where the towers are going to be coming through, so.
I'm not sure. As I said, I know the community had voted originally, but I don't think that they really had an opportunity to understand any part of it when that vote was taken out of it. Or do I know today what is that, is it either?
Well, they haven't given up.
They haven't given up as far as that.
Is there any other public input? Justin?
Mr. Dorsett, did you say Littleton represents four towns in the area?
We're, so we're joined together with several other towns. This donation affects four towns specifically, and they're specifically towns that Stephen Whitley represents in Mitchell, Mitchell Minusville Group. And that's where the donation is specifically for, is those four towns.
Which are those four towns?
I don't think I have them right here. I believe it was, I know Littleton and Bethlehem were both on the list, but I'm not sure about the other two. So I could give you that.
We'll see if we can find that out at some point. Thanks, Andy.
There are any other public input?
I've got another one on the question with these people with the state. Is that work that you're doing state work or is it being put out to bid?
It's state work which will be being put out to bid.
So, so you're not dealing, you're dealing with the preliminary part of it. You're not dealing with the contractor who's going to obtain the bid and having to go through it. You're going to get him the proposals out.
Correct.
So you haven't put it out to bid yet?
No.
And when will that?
Except to advertise on January fifth, June.
So that's, that's the potential project that what it would be.
Is there any other public input? Seeing none, close the public input session and move on to the board action section. The first one we have to take action on is the New Hampshire DOT Project forty-one-nine-zero-one granting them permission for their detour. Is there a motion to that effect?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three to nothing. The second one is the zoning board appointment. Is there a motion?
Do we have to accept Guy Harrington's resignation first or?
So we don't have a, he's, he's not in communication right now.
Okay.
I make a motion that we appoint George Morgan to the zoning board.
We'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's three to nothing. Next is the authorization for, authorization for the town treasurer to open an escrow account. Do I have a motion?
We'll make that motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three to nothing. Last is to accept and expend the anonymous donation of legal funds for the Northern Pass case. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Will you accept?
Is there a second?
We'll second it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. What if circumstances change at the town? I'm thinking about what, what he brought up earlier about, I know there was a town vote, but town can vote next year something different. Are these funds, I mean, is it dictated whether they're used to oppose? Or what if, what if the town's position changes on the issue? What, do we have the funds and then what do we do? Give them back or do we?
So the, the interesting is we don't accept the funds at all. The funds are donated directly to, but we're expending them. So we're basically, you're, you were accepting the use of them almost like a gift. The funds will sit at Mitchell Group.
Okay.
And each invoice will be charged to the fund. So it's almost, it's a gift each time up to the.
So if the town's position changes in the future, we'll just stop getting those?
That's right. We will have access to those funds.
Yeah, we won't be built.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's three to nothing. That concludes the selectmen's meeting for today, January seventh. Thank you.